So we're calling the AMSA Board of Trustees meeting on September 27, 2018. This meeting is being recorded and just quickly going to the, just covering what the agenda is, we'll be having opening items, an ED report, Chair Business Governance Committee update, Ed Committee update, we will not be having a Finance and Audit Committee update. Just to confirm, are we going to have a develop, is there a brief development update that somebody gave?
Yes.
Okay. Closing items, we will be going into executive session to discuss litigation strategies and consider the purchase and lease of real property as because to discuss in public might compromise our position, we will not be returning from executive session and this meeting is being recorded. With that, we will go for approval of minutes. I just want to confirm, did everybody have an opportu, or did anybody not review the minutes prior to this meeting?
I have one quick change.
Okay.
So Sarah, on page six, you have Jean listed as researching the AP numbers, that was actually also given to the Ed Committee and we did do that and I'll be reporting out on it.
So under, um, 7A?
Under agenda requests, yep.
So it's, um, the Education Committee?
Yes.
Any other modifications? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes with those edits? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Next, Sarah, do we have anybody for public comment today?
We don't need anybody here.
Okay, I don't know, I can't see everybody here or nobody here. Next, Faculty Rep update from Brianna.
Yep. So at this point, we're almost at the midpoint for term one or quarter one and our midpoint is reached tomorrow, so at that point, teachers are going to be using a new academic warning system where reports are going to be automatically generated and sent to families for any student who's earning a C minus or lower in any particular classes and this is in an effort to streamline communications, it's also just kind of nice for the teachers too, it takes a little bit off of them and sending all these individual emails and it also helps the school to get a better sense of what students are struggling in more than one class too, since they'll have all that information available to them. Within the past few month, or past month I should say, since last meeting, obviously we've been getting into the school year and there's been a couple new policies or protocols regarding attendance and just a lot of reminders about improving on consistency in policy enforcement from the teacher's side and that I think has been like a little bit of an adjustment for teachers, just to like submit attendance within the first five minutes and just constantly remembering certain, you know, policies and reminders to give students and all that, but I think gradually it's become a little bit easier, it's becoming more ingrained as a habit and obviously it's moving the school more in the, the direction of having this overall consistency when it comes to policies and expectations. And talking, or my talking to new staff members, many have reported who are, that they're excited to be at the school and they're feeling really comfortable at the school as well, feel like they've been welcomed into their new roles, which is always great to hear and feel like they had, that been very well informed in coming to start at the school as well. Within the counseling and health classes recently, I think we actually, within this past week, students have been introduced to the new ACT program or protocol, which is an acronym that stands for Acknowledge, Care, and Tell, there's actually a poster right there for it, which is a whole suicide prevention program. And currently, both counselors and health teachers have been compiling data from the surveys that students have been taking as part of that program and just in talking to one of the health teachers today who commented that it seems like this program was really desperately needed just in the beginnings of looking over those surveys and so I think a lot of people look forward to seeing what the results do tell us about where students are regarding mental health and all of that. Last Wednesday, kind of moving back to whole staff things, there was our first half-day professional development workshop, which was dedicated to department time, which gave teachers vital planning time as well and then our next half-day PD will be next month in October to work on different workshops, I believe actually, that the PD team is working on designing and teachers were sent a survey to indicate interest for that and what they would like to see. And then lastly, just yesterday, I believe, or two days ago, I'm trying to think about what day it is, over 20 teachers attended the Academic Excellence Committee, which was formed in response to the concerns that I raised through my last report last month and these teachers came together to engage in conversations about what academic excellence means to them and how they best define that for students and how we can kind of tackle that more as a school as well to ensure that students are adhering to that core value of pursuing their own excellence.
Did you see 20?
Yeah, oh yeah, we had a lot of interest, 26, okay, good. And yeah, and a whole variety of departments and grade levels and all of that, which is great to see and just had some really fruitful discussions, we went over our budget of time but people like wanted to stay there and continue having those discussions, so which is good to see again more collaboration and, and just conversation around this really important value of the school. And the committee is also going to meet again in October, we're meeting on the, the off days from our weekly Tuesday meeting time, so it's easy for a lot of people to attend since Tuesdays typically have a meeting, but there's one Tuesday a month usually where we don't have a meeting, so we've been using that for this committee and at that meeting, we'll be continuing this conversation and also begin compiling a survey to distribute to students regarding academic excellence.
Great. Any questions? Okay, next, Parent Rep update.
I actually have that for Jill. So Jill has received a few inquiry, inquiries from parents this month, most of which she referred to the proper school resource, but one issue of note has come up, a parent was concerned that the mayor of Marlboro told parents at a PTO meeting at Jerewick Elementary School in Marlboro that he didn't know if the AMSA was staying in Marlboro. And so the parent asked Jill to confirm that AMSA had bought the buildings and is staying, to which she replied that AMSA had already purchased the white building but was still in process of negotiating the purchase of 199 and 201 Forest Street from the owner, different owner than who owned the white building, so that this is the delay and possibly why the mayor was wondering if AMSA is staying in Marlboro. She added that the negotiations have taken longer than we had hoped, so that's kind of how the response to that. The second update is around the first PTO meeting of the year, that occurred earlier this week, they had a full agenda, so Jill did not present the full presentation of the, as the parent rep, but she did state that she was the primary liaison between the parent community and the board and gave a quick summary of what constitutes board-related issues or concerns as opposed to school administration matters. She added that parents can reach out to her with regards to any concerns, though not just board-related, and she would direct them to the appropriate resource. She also let the parents know that the Education Committee was open to having more parents join or even just attend the meetings, which I had asked her to do. Again, she also had requested if there were any parents with political connections to contact her to see if we could get any help, there is currently a bill pending in the House which includes the provision that would make charter schools eligible for MSBA funding for school construction and renovation costs, so several parents, no current and former politicians and one hopeful politician that would potentially help figure out how to get some traction on for this bill. So she is seeking input from parents and is hoping to get some, get some contacts and she actually attended the luncheon for the potential Senate candidate, so she was working that angle as well. The first family forum is next Tuesday, which obviously is Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay's, but she did just want to make sure that everybody was aware that that was taking place and that is the parent rep update.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions? Okay, next, we move on to the Executive's Direct Report.
Okay, so everyone has a copy there, so I will keep to my time, so welcome to everybody, we hope the start of the school year has gone very well, we've been very busy, most recently with our parent nights, on the 11th, we welcomed our sixth and ninth grade students, on the 13th, it was the seventh and eighth graders and then on the 20th, it was the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade parents. We hope, we think that the nights went well, certainly lots of positive energy, teachers did a fantastic job organizing the night, introducing parents to their courses and classes, Lynn McCluskey, Lynn McCluskey, as always, did an absolutely amazing job organizing the night, just a tremendous amount of work and it was great to see, we had student volunteers who were in each building and guiding folks and smiling and bringing a lot of good cheer, it was fantastic to see them. We learned lots of very valuable information such as the fact that most parents don't know our core values, which was, was a little disappointing, but it's good to know, we, Ellen and I asked at each night with each grade, you know, who here knows core values and the responses were, you know, we got one, you know, integrity or community or respect and then they kind of fudged the other ones, but that's really helpful information, good feedback, so clearly we've got lots of work to do in spreading knowledge of our core values, so the first thing that we did immediately in response to that was video, let's create a video, right, people, how do people learn today, they learn or they get lots of their information through video, so we made a video, maybe you've already seen it, it's been posted to the website, Mr. Finkel has always did an absolutely amazing job helping us with that video and it was sent out to the entire community, so hopefully that will start the process and we're, we're just at the beginning, beginnings of that, so we know we have a lot of work to do because we, as we've said many times, we don't just want them to be words on a wall, they have to be so much more than that. So four updates today and a few final thoughts, so update number one, communication, 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 something very important to Ellen and I, the whole team, transparent, honest, timely, and consistent communication is one of our top priorities this year, to build the community that we want at AMSA, community being our third core value, we need to communicate effectively with our community and within our leadership team, both of those are important goals that you will be discussing in the Ed Goals for the year. We need to communicate our goals, our values, our mission, we need to communicate effectively with our parents, we need to listen to feedback and ideas, we need to be responsive to feedback and ideas and develop policies and initiatives based on feedback and data, another one of the Ed Goals. A core part of communication, we believe, is with parents and staff and students is an open door policy, we want our community to know that our doors are always open and that everyone is always welcome and as you may know, we like to say that there are no doors and no walls at AMSA. We want our parents and staff to feel welcome all the time and we want our parents and staff to feel that their ideas and their concerns are always appreciated. We also want our parents and staff to feel that we are, we, Ellen and I, so this is on Ellen and I, that we are part of the community and that we're not just people who sit in faraway offices, we like to call the room that we sit in, the kryptonite room, though it is important to have a place, we realize that it's also important to be out and about so that people see that we're in touch for the day-to-day reality of the school. Another important avenue for parents to express their ideas, as Liz mentioned, is the family forum, which is coming up this Tuesday, I unfortunately will not be there, I'm being professionally developed, but Ellen, Ellen and our fantastic Vice Principal Mike Naraki will be there and Sarah will be there as well. And our Community Council too, we've, we've organized the Community Council, we've picked staff, parents, and students and that will be October 24th. So one of the most persistent concerns raised by parents in all of these forums, at the family forum, the Community Council, through the survey, was consistency of communication, which Brianna mentioned as well, between our staff and our parents and this was an area of concern also expressed by, by teachers. So in response to those concerns, we organized a committee of teachers and administrators to collaborate on creating a set of AMSA-produced and AMSA-approved best practices, this committee, which consisted of teachers and administrators, met in the spring, this was last year in the spring and they produced a draft protocol, the protocol was then distributed to department chairs and to teachers for review and for comments. At the start of the year, the protocol was discussed and reviewed during orientation week, so it's kind of gone through a very lengthy vetting process. This past week, on, just on the 18th, a shortened version of the protocol was posted on our website, you can see it under Student Life tab, so that parents will know what to expect, we want them to be able to see, these are our expectations for our staff, this is what you should expect from us, hold us to that standard, so you can see it yourself in Appendix So I, we, this is something that, it's, it's produced by our staff, it's produced by our teachers and it is reflective of their best practices. So as you can see, the protocol declares that effective and consistent communication with families is important in establishing relationships and can play a key role in student success and accountability, there are a few key highlights, a commitment to responding to parent concerns within no more than 48 hours, updating grades on Plus portals at least once every two weeks, and then a commitment for lower school teachers to do a little bit of extra and that little bit of extra, which is really important, is posting all assignments on Plus portals. Teachers can use Google Classroom, but at a minimum, just making sure for parents that assignments are posted on Plus portals. Another really important part of effective and consistent communication is proactive communication, so the protocol lists several reasons why teachers and counselors should reach out to parents and these reasons, as you can see there, include missing consecutive assignments or major, or major assignment, consistent performance at a D or below level, classroom disruption or change in student behavior. The protocol also says it's not just negative, it's also, there's also suggestion to reach out to parents when you see great things, when you see positive behavior, developing that relationship on the negative side, on the positive side is just really, really important to helping move our students to where we want them to go. So we are hopeful that the Communications Protocol establishes a set of clear expectations and will help improve communications between parents and staff, it's organically created, as we said, and reflects the ideas and best practices of our fantastic teachers and we are looking forward, you know, it is a document, a document doesn't solve everything, it's just a document, so there's a lot of work that needs to go into that, so we're very much looking forward to working with everybody, our staff, to making sure that the vision that's presented, our best practices, become a reality. In addition to that, we've established, the protocol includes a communication flow chart, which is also included to assist parents when they have questions about what is taking place in their child's classroom. And then really quickly, two other communications update, we added just a quick tab on our website, 11 Ways for Families to Get Involved at AMSA, to encourage further involvement, we've also posted a contact list as well, so those are little things, but hopefully collectively those things can, can add up. Second topic is excellence, Brianna talked about this quite a bit, so we're committed to improving communication, we're also very much committed and focused to maintaining and further AMSA's academic environment and the idea of academic excellence at AMSA, excellence, hard work, the joy of learning is our second core value, we take pride in that, we take pride in the value of perseverance, we take pride in the value of intellectual exploration. And in August, Brianna offers a very helpful report that summarized the ideas of several teachers who are dedicated to this idea, to creating that very optimal academic experience at AMSA. So right after that meeting, Ellen and I worked very closely with Brianna and we reached out to several of the teachers and on August 28th, we held what we thought, and I would defer to Brianna on all of this, we held what we thought was a positive meeting where everyone had a chance to voice their thoughts and at that initial meeting on the 28th, in addition to sharing ideas about how we can enrich our students' academic experience, we discussed ideas for how best to address those issues this year, we raised the question that I believe Chris discussed at the last board, more board meeting, we raised the question of do we need an outside consultant to assist us in navigating this issue because it is a very, very important issue? And I'll just say unanimously, correct me if I'm wrong Brianna, the group believed this was not a good idea, all expressed confidence that teachers and administration could work together effectively and collaboratively on this. It was also agreed that we would invite the entire staff, and this is what Brianna was referring to, the entire staff to a meeting, to have a broader discussion, invitations were sent out to teachers in all subjects and grades, everybody was encouraged to come. The initial group also reviewed, and you'll see this in the appendix, they also reviewed a set of questions that could serve as key points of discussion for the entire staff as we move forward with this process and the meeting was held, as Brianna mentioned, on Tuesday, the agenda and the questions, you can look at that, it's all in Appendix D. The meeting, we hope, went well, was attended by teachers and staff across all departments and all grade levels and, you know, personally, I was inspired by what everybody said, to a T, folks, every individual, the teacher, staff members, they talked about what does academic excellence mean to them, why are they at AMSA, what does AMSA mean to them, and told some very moving stories. So several main thoughts and ideas came up during the meeting, you can see those there, the importance of maintaining AMSA's commitment to high expectations, all teachers stated that our changing demographics, increase of students from our core towns, it's not an obstacle, it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity to live out our founding creed, an opportunity to create a school for residents in Clinton, Maynard, Hudson, and Marlboro and all surrounding communities in which all students, regardless of background and regardless of ability, can excel in all subjects, it is an opportunity. That we want to respect students with rigor, that everyone at the meeting, everyone at the meeting was clear about this, AMSA should never give in to the soft bigotry of low expectations, the idea that you're, you're from here because you're from here, because you come from this family, because of this or that, you can't achieve, we don't accept that, we should hold our students and ourselves to high standards. Folks also expressed that their proudest moments as teachers came, when students have to graduating or finishing a class, came back to them and told them that they were tough but fair. One teacher in particular brought a note from a student that stated, "In the beginning of this class, I thought that setting the bar too high was useless, but I found myself competing to write better than ever," which shows you how high expectations can motivate a kid. The importance of promoting the joy of struggle, that accomplishment is greater and more intensely felt when the task is harder, if everything is easy, that sense of joy and pride is diminished, but if students see that it is hard and they're giving the support and the structure and the accomplishment, how great that is for the student. The belief that at AMSA, we're doing really something that is truly unique, that we are, to quote another teacher who was very inspirational, that we're seeking the cultivation of the higher faculties, among which are judgment, taste, and civic virtue, that collection of qualities that Cicero called humanitas. The importance of knowledgeable, content-rich teaching and a strong challenging curriculum, the desire for increased collaboration and interdisciplinary courses, that was a big theme and a big topic that came up at the meeting, really helpful feedback, the need, related to that, the need for AMSA to offer additional college-level post-AP classes, several ideas came up, relativity, quantum mechanics, the idea of hosting academic symposiums where students and staff can present academic research, the AMSA version of TED Talks to some extent, the importance of demonstrating passion for the subjects that we teach, which I think is really, really important, we can talk till we're blue in the face about everything, but unless in the classroom, we demonstrate that passion, which we do, nothing else really matters, to spark that light of learning, we have to demonstrate the love that we have for our subjects. The importance of providing supports for students, so that was a topic that came up quite a bit as well, technology in the classroom, learning services for our students, a respectful classroom environment, and basic skills such as note-taking, increased tutoring. We have lots of kids at many different levels who come in at grade six and to get them where we want them to be, we need supports, we need structure, we need help, we need an EL program, we need a learning services program, so that we can provide them all those supports that they need, emotional supports as well from our Guidance Department. The importance of promoting a belief that effort, grit, and determination have an enormous impact on academic success, small class sizes, and communication, communication, communication once again. So Brianna mentioned that we will be meeting again on October 23rd, we're going to be working in between on two things, one, a student survey, so we can actually get some data from our kids, where do they feel challenged, where do they not feel challenged, what would they like to see in terms of courses, how could we challenge them more? So that is something we'll be working on, we're also interested in visiting some other schools, what do the top schools in the state, what does Boston Latin do, how do they promote academic excellence and academic achievement, what can we learn from the best of the best and from other schools as well? So hopefully we're making progress and we've begun that, that process and I think it'll be a really useful exercise, more than an exercise, a useful program for us. So another quick update from Guidance, important update, in addition to communications and excellence, we're also focused on helping our students adjust emotionally, socially to AMSA, those two really go together, right, the excellence part and the social and emotional part are both fundamental to what we do. And this past summer, our, just, we have a group of terrific lower school counselors, Jessica LaShavo and Joanna Erika, who created a absolutely amazing bi-weekly advisory program that provides students lessons on topics such as responsibility, empathy, perseverance, kindness, acceptance, mindfulness, respect, citizenship, mental health awareness, and leadership. They put a tremendous amount of work and a lot of thoughtfulness into this program and it's a really, really impressive program, our Guidance Department is just doing a tremendous amount of work, helping our students emotionally, helping them socially, and in turn, by helping them emotionally and socially, helping them academically. And we're really happy to say that Kate Driver, who is Massachusetts' best Director of Guidance, she is, and she will be coming, she's agreed to come here in November to update you. And then final update, development, we're also focused on that, that's one of the Ed Goals too. So since the August meeting, we have good news, we've hired a new consultant, Rick Tagliaferri, do I pronounce that right Ellen? So he has started, he has begun, he sits in the office next to Mark and he will be working at AMSA once a week through December vacation, lots of experience, Chris was very instrumental in helping us pick Rick, he has, also has a very wonderful grassroots approach to organizing, he really wants to get to know the community, he's been, been around the classrooms, he's been talking to department chairs, he really wants to know what AMSA is all about, which is great. His initial focus is going to be on conducting a fundraising feasibility study and creating a plan of action to develop a long-range capital campaign. He's also in the process of investing in a fundraising and donor management system so that we can create a fundraising database. More updates will be coming. Last but not least, I'm probably over my time, am I? No?
We've got two minutes.
Two minutes, perfect. So just kind of give you a sense of what we're looking, we're really happy, I think we've got agreement on the Ed Goals and as we did last year with the Ed Goals, Ellen and I, we will all, we're going to put them up on the darkboard and we will attack them thoroughly. Last year was a year of just whirlwind of activity, lots of initiatives, ELL program. So just kind of give you a sense of what we're looking, we're really happy, I think we've got agreement on the ED goals, and as we did last year with the ED goals, Ellen and I, we will all, we're going to put them up on the darkboard and we will attack them thoroughly. Last year was a year of just whirlwind of activity, lots of initiatives, ELL program, a reading program, improving special education now known as learning services, creating a stronger PD program, revising and implementing evaluation, new evaluation procedures, creating a stable and fair collective bargaining contract, working to have these restrictions removed, and implementing a new scheduling process. Much of this year is focused on refinement of what we've done, refinement of existing programs, so that AMSA runs as smoothly as possible. And we'll also be working, as we have noted, on communications, effective development program, instilling our core values, and maintaining AMSA's commitment, maintaining and furthering AMSA's commitment to academic excellence. Above and beyond those new initiatives and the refinement of our existing procedures, our core focus today, as it was yesterday, as it will be tomorrow, is the creation of a culture of trust, care, transparency, and integrity, our first and most important value. We're happy to see that questions around core values, trust, and communication, will we believe be a part of the PULSE survey. Building trust and morale are not, they're not new initiatives, they're not new ideas, but they're essential to everything that we do. They can never, ever, ever, ever be taken for granted. We talked about the importance of passion in the classroom, outside of the classroom, it's trust, it's morale, it's integrity. You take those things away, everything else is going to crumble. We're not going to let that happen. Without these, without trust, morale, little else matters. With them, with teamwork, with trust and integrity, we can build AMSA into the model school, the lighthouse. I have to always use that reference, the lighthouse that we all want AMSA to be for our Commonwealth and our nation. Go Eagles! Did I make it Roger?
Any questions? Can I just say, well, I have just one comment. It's utterly infused with our core values. It's awesome.
It's gonna be like a broken record. There he goes again, here comes the lighthouse.
That's your job? I read once a book, The Four Rules of an Executive, and one of the rules was basically you have to say the same thing over and over and over and over and over and over again. I didn't put enough overs in there, so that when people see you coming down the hall, they'll say, oh, there he goes. He's gonna be talking about those values, but then they can say what those values are. And mission accomplished, right? Yeah, so, great. All right, thank you. Onto Chair Business. So just before we get to that, I just wanted to mention something to the board generally. We were meeting with Ellen and Anders, Roger and I, just before this meeting and talking about various things. And one thing we were talking about was community, and when the core values were being developed, you know, community and collaboration were kind of like just overlapping Venn diagram items. And I just want to encourage all of us as, whether we're members of committees, members of the board, heads of committees, to make sure we're just focusing on the core values, emphasizing them, and practicing them. Because we are leaders, we've got to make sure we're all, in everything we're doing, we're making that happen. So especially with collaboration, which has been a challenge in past years, we want to make sure we're changing the culture and changing the talent set. With that, Roger, if you wouldn't mind sharing the ED goals?
Sure. So in your packet, you should have a ED goals, one, yep, a lot of yellow highlighting on it. So the Governance Committee tonight at 6:00 PM reviewed the ED goals, and with one very, very small tweak, it'll be, is what we're going to be recommending for approval, or for discussion approval. The only changes are in the organizational effectiveness section. We have swapped goal letters B and C to emphasize the evidence of improved communication among the leadership team. And we are changing the word in the previous goal letter, one B, now one C. We're replacing improved with continued. So the reading would be demonstrate evidence of continued communication, teamwork, and collaboration with all stakeholders. So as far as leading the discussion, I think we could just go through flag and discuss by section, I'm thinking is a way to go. So any flag or discussion on?
Yeah, on 1A, while the core values support the mission, it might be good to add the word mission. Because it's the thing that we're trying to do here, we're trying to succeed in our mission, and the core values do support that, but it would be nice to focus on our mission also. So I'd add the word mission and core values, or something like that.
That one is a tough one, actually. I thought it was a problem because, and we have had a lot of discussion on this in both in faculty goals this year and in past years, there are some things that are just part of the job. And that, in fact, is like being critical part of the job. You know, just there's certain things that are, that you have to do. A safe school is just part of the job. We don't call out all things that are job performance expectation things. These are sort of unique things that are particularly important for this school.
Well, the core values are also part of the job, okay?
No, you're not. You can have them for twelve years. So obviously they weren't. Right?
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, we went through a whole process to establish those values. So that's, that's, that's fine.
I think overall in the discussion is, in the creation of these, it's been, anything that's just expected to happen isn't listed as one of these goals. These are sort of the, these are, the idea behind the Governance Committee's thoughts were that these are, all they said, they're specific new initiatives or things that are critical to the school.
So if we veered off our mission, it doesn't affect us, though?
Well, it wouldn't show up in the goals, it wouldn't show up in job requirements.
Okay.
I feel like you can trace the history of some of these goals too and understand where they're coming from, given the past of the school and like past administrations and all that too. So I see what you mean, it's more of kind of responsive to areas of need over the years. And yeah, and challenges, exactly. Rather than, like you're saying, you know, our curriculum, our academics and everything are supposed to uphold the mission, so it's not like, you know, a goal runs counter to our curriculum and that kind of thing.
Other flag and discussion on Section 1? Onto Section 2?
One is a little bit difficult to measure the way it's written, so I don't, I guess generally where we say demonstrate, 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 it's a little bit difficult at a point with evidence, because it's fairly vague, not opposed to generally broad-based goals, but I think this one in particular is a little bit vague. Because, you know, the folks who drafted this have particular ideas in mind of what would the evidence of achievement would mean on this one?
Can I make a comment? So I don't know what, I wasn't part of, well, actually part of all of it, part of it, I was. So I would think, to your point, it is hard to measure, but it's, to actually put a direct metric on something like this would almost prescribe what the measures are, what the new effective measures, I'm sorry, what the, what the solution is. So kind of, I'll throw one thing out, and I don't know if we talked about this one. So I think about like where I work, they have this notion of like this committee that always is reviewing new ideas and kind of like making them go through a stage eight process to see, should you implement it or not, and how are you going to measure it? And then if you do, was it successful? And if it was successful, do you roll it out? I could see like, a year from now, we had a program like that in place, boy, that's demonstrating success in this space. Or if there were some other program or some other things that happened. So I think this one is tricky to measure without prescribing what you have to do.
We don't want to do that, obviously.
I'm sorry?
What you're saying is we really want to see that developed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put this together, Sarah, Ellen and I, and it is, your point's a good one, Chris, and then Rick, your point's a good one too. It's a tough one to measure, but you know, we thought that, you know, overall, if you're talking about innovation and creativity and experimentation, where do you need to see that? The most important thing that we do at a school is what happens in our classroom. Do you see that in our classroom? Is there evidence of experimentation? Do we at AMSA prescribe to every teacher the way you're going to teach your class? Do we permit our teachers, be it in history, science, lit, foreign language, different techniques, different ideas? Do we create a culture where staff who see concerns, see problems, feel empowered to solve those problems, create programs, create policies, create procedures to address those concerns? Or is everything a straitjacket approach from the top down? Is everything a cookie cutter approach? And do we respond, you know, once, you know, it's one thing to say, okay, every, you know, we've got different ideas in the classroom, different ideas for addressing this problem. Do we use data? I think the board's very interested in that. Do we judge us, right? So if we're trying something new, if we're trying something new in a science class, new in a history class, a lit class, how do we know it's working? Are we examining it? Is student achievement improving? And can we measure it and test it? Just purely scientific method put into practice. Hypothesis.
My observations are that this is one of the strengths that we already have at school. And so I guess my question is, do you feel like there's some weakness or need to improve upon that, and that's why it's on here?
Yes, and that's why E is the answer, the E is the answer to A.
Oh.
Right? So the, one of the strengths of our school, I think, and I think the past few years is we have very strong departments and we have absolutely fantastic department heads who know their content, know how to teach, and do a great job developing staff, and they're absolutely fantastic. I think one of the things that we're looking at this year is, because we have such strong departments, what happens with kids who might fall in between departments, who might evidence one problem in one department, but it's also a problem that affects another department or another content area? So one of the things that we want to do is create a rigorous academic tracking system where someone is really keeping a bird's eye view of everything that's going on with the kid. So we don't have students who are falling between cracks, we have people who are asking questions of our department chairs, we're examining the progress of each and every student through time. So a little bit of centralization while also a little bit of grounds-up initiative within each of our departments. And hopefully those two balance out. So that we have creativity, we have innovation, but we also have some centralization so that no single kid falls through a crack. And we're making sure that every single kid gets all of the sports that they need. So that's, that kind of, that's the idea behind A and behind B.
The other idea that I gave was, yes, it is a strength in every school, but.
The other piece that ties into that, I mean, I'm wondering, we have professional development expectations for the faculty, and somewhere in there, I'm thinking there's a session or workshop, or a piece of the department's own best practices. And somehow is there a tie here between looking for the implementation of best practices, whether they're already being used in school in, say, one department or another, versus also experimental practices? If this best practices are out there, if the quality of professional development, maybe to then monitor to see if it's being infused into the curriculum, and the innovation, the experimentation, and everything. And I do know whether it's a measure to do that.
Looks like we are set on 2, is that? Discussion on 3.
Can I ask another question? This is a very long, robust list of goals. Does anyone have any questions as to whether it's too much, wide open one here? I'm just asking, sometimes we have too much, it gets to be difficult to address any one in particular. It's a long, it's a long list. Not, I don't think that any of them are fabulous, I just, you know, want success for everyone. Thoughts on that?
I have a thought. So I would agree, and if I were to see this long of a list in general, I would think, wow, this is going to be difficult. When I see the progress that's been made over the last year, and how much was addressed, and how quickly, I have like really high confidence in achieving performance too. Devoted comments. Please start with the task performance.
How does it compare to last year? Is this like 25% more, about the same?
Yeah. Just different content, but similar.
From a faculty perspective, I feel like a lot of, especially 1 and 2, are more continuing current efforts and programs and stuff, yeah.
We're very confident. We're excited as well too, so, I mean, we really are, so we're excited about the opportunity.
Yeah, exactly.
Practice what you preach. Well, the conversation, I would take, cast it back to Rick.
So can we motion to approve the ED goals with the modifications that were spoken out?
Second.
All those approved? Next, we've got the survey, Task Force Pulse Survey Update, and is that?
Yes.
New ones?
So the task force, we met with Panorama to discuss launching the PULSE survey to both the families as well as the teachers. Just as a reminder, we talked about doing a PULSE survey after the survey in the spring. Really just scaling down, limiting the number of questions, but really just trying to get a pulse sense of how things are going. And certainly, you know, if we are hearing any feedback, that we can do a course correction as opposed to wait until the spring, that's really the whole idea behind the PULSE survey. So the timing of the survey, we determined would be November 8th through November 28th, and that will be right after the first term closes. So we thought from a timing perspective, that made sense, because the teachers and the students would have just wrapped up the first term. The team met on September 18th to come up with the draft questions for the survey. We ended up with around 17 or 18 questions. Both the family survey as well as the teacher survey is broken down into the three, the three same buckets, which are core values, communications, and high expectations for all. So the questions fall into one of those three categories. Brianna has already met with Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay to review the questions that the team came up with, and the next step is for the team to meet with Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay and finalize the survey for release to Panorama. So we do need to have the questions back to Panorama by October 15th in order for them to upload the survey and get it ready for release. So they'll release it for the November 8th, and then do all of the follow-up as well, and we'll have, we should have the reports in December from the, from the survey. And that is it, unless anyone has a question. And that is it, unless anyone has any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
And governance committee update, Roger?
So I'd like to, I was gonna, you can look at these slides later on, they are uploaded, but I just want to walk through open meeting law overview. So we're going to talk about what is open meeting law and emphasize key aspects that affect, that are really prevalent to AMSA, and try to answer questions that you may have about open meeting law. So, you know, what is OML? It's open meeting law, it's not order of merit list, or orange mutant llamas, or the oil, oil mining license. But in our context, it's open meeting law. I'm going to talk about the application of open meeting law, when does it apply, emphasizing remote participation, which is a thing that we are able to do, and talk about executive session, which we spend a lot of time there. So the key part of open meeting law is its application. When does it apply? It involves communication between or among members of the public body. All our trustees are members of the public body, the AMSA board of trustees. So that's, are you a member? The second thing is, it's, if we're communicating, if we're just discussing the facts, what's two plus two, that's not deliberation. If we're saying, what is your opinion on the history curriculum, that's, that's more, that could be viewed as deliberation. So there's more detail, but if you're presenting facts, it's not deliberation. If you are discussing your opinion, then it most likely is deliberation. Finally, if we're having a passionate debate about the Red Sox versus Yankees, that's not an item that's within the body's jurisdiction, so it has to be an item that is germane to the board of trustees. And there are a few, finally, there are a few exceptions involving things like site visits, or if we as a group were to go attend a convention, there are exceptions that'll allow you to not be covered under open meeting law, but attending as a group. Couple key plots about remote participation. First, a key part of remote participation is you have to have it included in your bylaws. We did this about three years ago. Second, and a key part that some people forget, is that even if we're doing remote participation, the quorum of the board, the quorum of the board or committee has to be present at the meeting site. So if we wanted to do remote, have remote participation, but a quorum of the board was not here physically here at AMSA, we could not have the meeting, even though between the participants here at the meeting and the remote participants, we would have quorum, that's not sufficient under the rules. Second requirement is that all members be able to hear each other, so if we're having challenges with the communication, then we would probably end the remote participation. And finally, that all votes have to be done via roll call. And a recent change after we got the initial approval is that you no longer have to, you do have to announce that members are participating remotely and who they are, but you do no longer have to provide the reason for the remote participation. Finally, executive session.
I'm sorry, can I just ask on that?
Certainly.
So you don't have to provide the reason, in terms of announcing it, but there needs to be a valid reason? Is that correct? Or has the scope of valid reasons broadened?
The scope of valid reasons is up to the discretion of the chair of the board or committee.
Okay.
But you don't, so you no longer have to announce, you know, Roger Jarrett's not able to go here because he's too far away.
Okay.
So, good question. Executive session. So executive session is ability to discuss things not in open meeting. There are 10 reasons listed under the, the whole large report, I don't, I should have it here, but there's about, there's a very large document that this talk summarizes, but there are 10 reasons. For our use, we have had four major ones. We have litigation strategy, purchase or lease of real estate, strategy and negotiations with non-union personnel, and strategy and collective bargaining with union personnel. So in summary, open meeting law covers all board and committee meetings. In some cases, it may also extend to a task force as well, but it definitely covers all board and committee meetings. Remote participation is allowed in both board and committee meetings and executive sessions. Executive session is allowed for specific reasons. As in tonight's meeting, the chair must announce the reason for the executive session and whether or not we will be resuming an open session afterwards. And if you have any questions about open meeting law, please contact me as the governance chair. And if you need further guidance, you can also, there's a, in your slide, there's a, in the slide deck, there's a set of resources, and if you have something that you don't feel comfortable talking to me about as governance chair, you can also reach out to the state attorney general as well. Questions?
All right, thank you. Were you going to be discussing a couple other items on the agenda in terms of board advisory and approval of Pauline?
Yes, I'd like, so next up, speaking from the St. Sarniel's perspective, the St. Sarniel's is going to request that Pauline Jenryan be approved as a director for St. Sarniel's. The St. Sarniel's Foundation has a bylaw requirement that all the directors of St. Sarniel's be approved by the AMSA board of trustees.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve Pauline?
Motion to move, move to approve.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Who's there?
I go.
Thank you. So approved?
Pauline, or Sarah, Pauline.
I'm sorry. Terrible.
And then, the next item?
Next item. So this, this is just a preliminary headline and inform at this point. We have discussed in the past, and we're going to bring this back to governance, that we would like to create what we're going to call a board advisory council. This is a place for either members of the board that are moving, are retiring from the board, or prospective board members that don't yet, haven't yet made the commitment to the board, or just a place to collect resources that can help AMSA. And we're going to discuss it further in governance to how to structure it, and come back, our plan is to come back with a proposal next month, concrete proposal about the board advisory council.
And if I may add, this was kind of inspired when Mike Glass was having to step down from the board, and yet wanted to still be able to participate in some way, and we had some discussions around that, and then that's how this proposal, or how this was ultimately proposed, and so, so that's just a little bit of background there.
I think Chris O'Keefe was also one of the prime movers on this as well.
Yeah.
And, and finally, there was a discussion that the founders and Ellen are working toward standing up the alumni association, and making some initial progress there, and one of the ideas that was proposed in governance is giving a thumbs up on, that we'll need to discuss, we'll come back with more details, but the alumni association has made the suggestion that could an alumni be, have an alumni trustee position on the board. And the preliminary discussion in governance gave it a thumbs up, this is, it'd be a great idea. In order to make that happen, we would need to modify our bylaws, and the governance will take the action to investigate further and come back with a concrete proposal.
Great. And if I may comment, I think that's a great idea to do that, because you think about, we're trying to involve all our stakeholders, we've got representation from faculty, we've got it from parents, we want to become more inclusive with our alumni, so this is great step in making that happen.
And that ends governance?
Okay, great. Any questions? Okay, very good. Boy, we're doing really well on time. Ed committee update.
Yes. So Ellen just gave you a three-page PowerPoint document. If you guys would just open up, sorry, this is in very green, but if you would just open up to the slide that has the table on it, and the graphic, we'll start there. So on this particular graphic, what I put in here is the, the blue bars represent the percent of AMSA students who scored a three or above. And obviously, just as a reminder, the goal is 90%, but we did have a couple of years where that did not occur. The orange line represents the rank within the state of Massachusetts with the different districts. And so what I did on that, you'll see the last line is just a dotted line, we had to, we don't have the results from 27, 2018 yet, 2017, 2018. We don't have the rank, but we did go in and look at the scores for 27, 2018, and based on the scores, we thought would end up somewhere around 14. So that's just an educated guess at this point, it's not fact. So we will probably have an update in the November timeframe, so once we get that, I will provide that to everyone. And then finally, I overlaid the teacher retention, or teacher attrition, I should say, in black, so that you could see how the impact of, of losing teachers and, you know, having, having some challenging years really potentially impacted the AP test scores, because all of a sudden, you have new teachers teaching AP courses, they don't have the experience, and that's something that has to develop over time. So any questions on where we stand? So obviously, the blue bars, we want to be higher, the orange line, we want to be lower, as well as the black line.
Can you, can you explain again the orange dotted line?
Yes, so that dotted line, it's just an estimate at this point. We don't know what the 27, 2018, 2017, 2018 rank is going to be. So based on the fact that we scored 92.4%, we just did, you know, we looked at what everyone else was ranked, and so we just did a guesstimate that that would appear around Which obviously, it shows a significant trend in the right direction. The ed committee did look at this last, at last month's meeting, per the request of the board. Some of the observations that the ed committee made was certainly that there is a lot more to the AP test score than, than just the number. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of growth that we want to see take place, and we want to have accessibility for students to take that. That being said, the, the ed committee does plan to look at a few different slices of data we haven't met again since our last, since we met to discuss this, but we will be looking at some different slices of data at our next meeting. One of the challenges we do see is we're never really going to be able to do a true comparison of that rank number, because we do not know other districts methodology or accessibility of exams. That's not something that's measured. The, the one big thing that we did want to make note of, the years when the score has trended down and the rank trended up, were the volatile years for the school. So during this time, there were leadership challenges. As you can see by that black line, there was high teacher turnover, as well as morale challenges. In 2016, there was the student override form, which allowed the students to take the test, even if the recommendation was to abstain from taking the test. And we, there was counselor turnover as well. So that, those were some of the observations that the ed committee made. And then we did sit down with Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay just to go over this. Some of the current AMSA initiatives that are, are looking to improve the AP test scores, they've opened up a question bank that the teachers can use, so that they can provide the students with real AP exam questions, either to use in class or as part of homework assignments. And as a result, students will be able to get feedback on the AP exams, and they'll be able to sort of get to see where they need to focus their, their work, and where they need to sort of focus the study areas. We talked about there being a workshop planned for AP teachers, and this will be across the board, so it's not specific to one subject area, but it'll be across the board, where the teachers will, will be able to have a workshop to really go over what best, what best practices exist for teaching AP students. And obviously, you know, the fact that they have this new resource of the question bank and, and the results is going to be, be helpful for the AP teachers. And then the department chairs just continue to work within the subject areas with the AP teachers. One note of change that occurs this year that is not specific to AMSA, it's actually, it happens at the college test level, so it's going to impact everyone, but students are going to have to register in early November for the exams that take place in the April-May timeframe. So they're basically going to have to sign up early to, to be able to take the exam. And I think, will they be able to sign up late and, at an added fee, or is it only, if they're not signed up in November, they can't take it?
They, they gotta, there's a deadline, they have to take, they have to pay in November, they have to register for it.
They can still opt out when the test.
They can still opt out, but they're going to lose their money.
Right. So that is one, one process change that, that occurs.
So there's no late, there's no ability to sign up late?
No.
No.
I think there is, but it's only like a couple weeks in November, it's still in November.
It's a couple weeks in November.
Yeah.
It's on the window. But you miss the window, and that's why the teachers and the counselors really have to follow up with kids, make sure they get it done. But they're running, they're running sessions to do that.
Are we, are we able to track the percentage of students that have signed up?
Oh, yeah, they, they are tracking that very, very closely, and Kate Driver's working with all the AP teachers on that.
Excellent.
AP teachers are also tracking it. And they can see the list themselves. Oh. I have another question.
Yes.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the teacher attrition numbers.
Yep.
Are these AP teacher?
Nope, it's overall. This is overall teacher attrition.
I still don't know what that was.
Yeah.
I agree. It felt like more.
Because sometimes those numbers including other staff, but people just purely teaching.
Right, yeah, so we separated the other staff from the, from the teachers.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. The numbers I recall are higher.
And these are shifted one to the left? So.
No, it's at the end of the year.
So, oh, this is the, this is the, so the, okay.
So for 2017, 2018, which was the end of June, five, five teachers left.
So, but to your point, interpreting it should be.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. The, the effect of losing a teacher, is it multi-year, is it multi-year hit?
Correct, absolutely.
So it may be that you're right, that the increase in teacher attrition has led to the increasingly poor performance. But as a teacher, I can tell you the opposite is also true. As the performance decreases, morale suffers. It really does. Teachers want to see excellence, right? And as it goes down from sixth to 46th, that has a major impact on how you feel about being a teacher. I just thought I'd mention that.
Yeah.
So the opposite is true.
Well, and hopefully, the opposite will be true, and if we do truly fall to 14.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That will have a positive impact.
That'd be great.
That would be the, the hope.
When do those numbers come out?
Um, November.
Looks like November, starting today, we've been checking it like.
Yeah, every day. Refresh, refresh.
It actually notices a date on there that they didn't update the last year's scores until November, so I'm expecting it by the number of.
Though it's, it's pretty safe to say this, this, it's, it's very close in that range, based on, because I, I'm sorry.
So what I did, I said, if all things being, being the same.
Yeah.
If all, if all of these scores were the same.
Yeah.
Where would we fall? Then we would smack at number 14.
Okay. Because I, I did a little cheating, well, I don't know, cheating, I tried to do the same thing.
Okay.
And I came up with a very similar number, too, so, yeah.
I think overall, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Because I did a little cheating, well, I don't know, cheating, I tried to do the same thing.
Okay.
And I came up with a very similar number, too, so, yeah.
I think overall, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was going to say, I think overall, the bigger thing to focus on is that 92% of students received a three or higher on the exam. And I think, I do think that ranking, this ranking in the state is a good thing to look at and just to compare ourselves, but, I mean, ultimately, we know we have a lot of success with those AP scores already, so I think that's kind of more the grain. Maybe I'm too much of an optimist, but I do think that's, like, we get, we know the success has already been proven, it's just waiting on that ranking to come out.
Right, and I think the other thing is, is we also need to consider the accessibility and how many of the students are taking the exam, because that's another big factor for us.
Do we know, what caught my eyes between 2012 and 2014, where attrition was about the same, but yet the ranking got significantly worse. Is that because other schools did so much better?
Yes.
You know, we went from, you know, a ranking of, what, six to about 25 or so? Yeah, six to 25.
Yeah, and yet, we were still above the 90%, if you look at it. So obviously, there was just a significant jump in other schools' scores.
In other schools, because our attrition was about the same.
Yeah, yep.
Well, one thing I think would be really, I'm concerned about using ranking for much of a measurement, because-
That's why I wanted everything on one slide. I knew it was gonna, yeah.
But the challenge with the ranking is that, you know, I think of it like a cross-country race. You have 100 runners, and they're all within one second of each other, and they all cross the line.
Yeah.
One of them's ranked number one, and one of them's ranked number 101, but they were, you need scoring like a bicycle race, where they say, well, this whole group has scored about the same.
Yeah, I did know bicycles were-
Yeah, yeah, so the whole-
You mean, and something new?
Yeah, exactly.
Let's see what you're saying.
What's the name for the group of?
Peloton?
No, it's, the, peloton.
When the whole peloton goes through, they all get same time.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So that's why I'm more, I'm much more excited, like Brianna, about the percentage, the absolute number than what our ranking is, because, you know, one score could move us 20, could move us 10 positions.
Yep.
Score, score is an access, I think, are the two keys.
Right.
Yeah, I was thinking that, to your question, I think access changed, you know, here it comes.
Yeah.
I was trying to follow that.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's score, my personal ranking would be score, access and score, I guess I'll put score above it, because they have to put something, score, access, ranking.
Yep, yep. Okay, so I will plan to, once we have the updated information, I'll plan to update the Board, probably in the, at the November meeting.
Great. Any other questions in this space?
Just one other update for the Ed Committee. I just wanted to let you all know, we discussed adding a student representative to the Ed Committee. After a lot of back and forth, we looked at, do we have someone come in from Student Government? Do we have someone come in from National Honor Society? What we decided was we were actually going to solicit a couple volunteers. The reason behind that is, depending on what we're talking about, not, you know, one person may not have access or visibility to all of that. If we were talking about ELL or Special Education, that a National Honor Society student would have no, very little impact, or, you know, be able to provide a lot of input. So Ellen is in the process of soliciting some volunteers, and it turns out, people were interested, so that's very exciting, so-
They're already confirmed.
Oh, so, we'll be discussing that at our next meeting, but we are, we are going to move forward with that. And that's it for Ed Committee.
Next, Liz.
No problem.
Time check on time.
Great. Okay, so with that, maybe we can just take a few minutes for retrospective, to just reflect, I wasn't here for the last meeting, and I think-
You went really fast.
What's that?
You went really fast.
Yeah, I did, I sure did.
I think we've lost the development update?
Right, we haven't done development well.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. It'll be quick, I think, Dr. Lewis, your page 11 covers the development quite well. Chris couldn't be here today, so he asked me would I give the update, so I'm going to just read quickly what he wrote, it's fairly short. "After interviewing three candidates, the school has hired Rick Tagliaferro to serve as a consultant getting our development efforts organized and underway. It's a time-limited engagement to get us started, not a long-term commitment," I think Dr. Lewis's update says, "through December. The committee has met with Rick, and we are impressed with his skills. He has significant experience in school fundraising and major gifts, and is a very good match for AMSA at this stage of our development. Ellen Lindsay will serve as the senior staff person on the committee. Mark Vito has been, has been great, and will continue to be involved, but the next stage requires a senior executive. Before the next BOT meeting, we will be meeting with Ellen and Rick to get started. Stay tuned, and I think that meeting has been set up for the 22nd."
20 seconds is the call.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of months away. And I do remember Rick from our meeting back in May, which he gave a lot of good inputs, was very helpful. I believe Chris has worked with him previously at United, United Way, I believe. And I recall him saying that when we initially had that meeting back in May, that as we sort of described our overall goals and where we were headed, and the initial reaction was sort of, we need to start with something small, it's like how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? And as opposed to this million-dollar number, which we were focused on, it was recommendation, maybe $100,000, we start off at, maybe the HVAC system, or something like that, so. And he also talked about the database, which I saw you had in your notes also, Dr. Lewis, so it sounds like he would be a, is a good fit, and moving forward, and he's already on board.
Do we have an estimate for the cost, and is it in the budget?
Good questions, I don't know, I don't know if, Dr. Lewis, if you know.
Yes.
There was a development director in the budget.
I'm sorry?
I don't know the cost, I know there was a development director in the budget.
See, that's what I thought, and we-
But I don't know about the cost.
But I know we talked about it at one of our, one of our meetings, so.
Well, if we didn't have the number, how could it have been a discussion?
No, the development director was in the budget, right? So the budget included-
Oh, I see, I see, I see, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't know about the particular cost.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And that is about it?
Great. Any questions? Very good.
I know we weren't going to have a Finance Committee update, but we did have an item that we needed to have, because it was a proposal to a change in a policy.
Okay, sure.
So I don't know if you want to have that quick, I don't know if it was in the document, it's fairly, like, it's with regard to the Financial Assistance Program. So there are some required textbooks by certain classrooms that students have to pay for, and so the recommendation was that we add, anyone who is under 100%, you know, would get 100% scholarship if they fell into the, you know, same financial assistance category as some of the students on the free lunch program. So I believe we need to get that approved, as an amendment to the policy, right, within the Board?
Yeah.
That was discussed?
Okay, can I make motion?
Is this a proposed, wait, was this a, an amendment to the budget?
It's a proposed amendment to the policy for Financial Assistance.
But does the budget would stay the same?
The budget would, you know, be within a few dollars, and we said we would absorb it elsewhere, I believe, when we discussed it, right? Do you remember, Jean?
Well, we think it'll hit the budget differently, I mean, obviously, but are we changing the budget?
No.
Okay.
Not in total. It's not, it's not significant enough to make a difference in the budget, right? The discretionary spend, I think that's what we discussed. Anyone who calls differently, let me know. Makes sense. So should I ask?
Yeah, so do we have a motion to-
Do you ask them a motion to accept this proposal for Financial Assistance?
I move that we vote.
Is that a motion?
Yes, please.
Any second.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved? Okay, very good. Last time, Roger, was it you who had run the retrospective?
Yes, so-
Can you maybe recall what you did for that one? Because I wasn't here for that.
So what we did was, we just did a quick, around the room, asking everyone to provide feedback on the effectiveness of the meeting.
Okay, great. So with that, would you like to start?
Sure. I think one thing we need to make the meeting more effective is to get our AV act together.
I second.
And I think what we could do is just to have, in particular, have a computer here already set up, that we could just have, and the presenter should have thumb drives with their document ready to go.
Yeah, maybe that's-
With the internet all, yeah, the Wi-Fi already set up.
Well, we don't need, we don't need Wi-Fi, because we've got our presentation-
On a thumb drive.
On a thumb drive, like what Liz had.
So I would suggest, though, I agree, though, sometimes we go online for a few things, like the survey results, so it might be you just-
Yes, to have both, presenter should have a thumb drive, and the computer should already be pre-set up for online access.
Great.
Erica, offer today, we did think she needed to.
Now we know, now we know better.
Lesson learned.
Yeah, that would be great, if we can just make that a default, as part of the meeting setup.
Right.
Holly?
I, I agree, I think that was literally the biggest challenge today. I was just trying to think, like, if there's something, some other way to do that, you know, having the, all the documents uploaded makes it easier, too, so.
Could you just email us whatever you wish to present, and we could just set it up beforehand?
Everybody can-
We could just have a computer that-
Well, it should all be uploaded on board on track, right?
Yeah, but I think, especially with presentations, or is it like, next month, we have guidance coming in, I think it would be great to have their presentation-
Projected.
Be able to project it, and it makes much, for a much better presentation than me reading slides that nobody else can see.
Yeah, and they were fun.
They were fun, too.
My comment's the same as Roger's.
I think we talked last time about whether or not we wanted to add strategic topics to the discussion in the Board, so perhaps a formal framework of, do we require one every meeting, or should we just leave it to the members of the Board to make suggestions? I think that, you know, making a decision around that might be important.
So to that point, maybe at the conclusion of this, we can maybe try to pick a topic or suggest a topic. If we, if we have something that's kind of bubbling up to the top right now, otherwise, people can send them in.
Sure.
We can do that at the end. Okay, great. Any retrospective comments? Jean?
Well, typically, meetings start with votes, so we get those out of the way, and then we have time for a strategic discussion. And this agenda is not set up that way, so we never get to discuss strategic points. So it would have to be reformatted or rearranged somehow, you know, by a lot, in order for us to do that. So I don't know how feasible that is. I mean, a lot of the discussion from the committees, is that as important as having time for strategic discussions? I don't know. But this way doesn't allow for time for serious strategic discussion.
Yeah, so to that point, I can't recall the comments you made, but like, I don't know if it's that, or whatever, something to that effect. I mean, ideally, the Board on Track recommendation is like, I don't remember, 80 or 90% of the discussion should be strategic in nature. I think aspects of strategic conversation occur in a lot of things we do, but it's probably not as focused on, let's look at this item and talk about it in detail. So I think certainly a few of us can take that feedback back and consider how we might want to set up the agenda.
I mean, my experience in Board meetings is, you start with the votes, that, here are the three things we need to vote on, and then you vote on them, and that's out of the way. Then you can discuss the important items. And a lot of the discussion that we have here is typically kept in the, you know, in the subcommittees, all right, and is not presented and taken up time of a Board meeting. I'd recommend that, but I'm not strong about it. I mean, if everyone wants to discuss it this way, it's fine, but this is not typical.
I know we looked at the timeline last meeting of the, of like, what topics we would address in each month, and nothing stood out to me then, because I was having, I had the same thought, but I'm looking at the clock, and it's 8:10, and I know July, our July meeting is really short, which is amazing, but then we have these meetings that do go closer to like 9:30 or 10:00, so I don't, I don't know what the answer is. Because it's, I mean, it's great that there's a short meeting, but I'm just wondering, like, if there's a way to better spread out the topics. And again, I know we just looked at the outline, and I was thinking the same thing and looking at it, and nothing seemed like it would make sense to shift, but, and I guess maybe we just can't anticipate what's going to take a while either, and what's going to run over it, but maybe like better, closer timekeeping, and I think the format of the agenda kind of moves us in that direction, too.
Yeah, I think, to your point, close, potentially, closer timekeeping is helping to shorten things, and it's going to build in some extra time for some other stuff.
Yeah.
Though to your, to your earlier point, sometimes you just don't know.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I'm with technology. I hate to see us printing off documents to review, so. If, I think if we can fix the technology for the meetings, that'll be helpful. Just get it set up ahead of time.
Again?
Yeah, so we can, whatever you wish to present, we can figure that all out beforehand, and have everything set up, and have copies made, and handouts made, we can facilitate that.
Great. And I can echo what everybody said, I think the notion of being very intentional about having a strategic topic is probably a very good idea. And as we get into the habit of that, I think hopefully we'll increase the amount of time we spend, and then figure out ways to maybe, where appropriate, shrink other things, so. So with that, does anybody have some proposals of what may be a strategic topic to discuss for next month, if we have the time? I, we haven't built the agenda out yet, but assuming we can build some time in for that.
Next month is the audit.
Oh, we'll not have time then, yeah, okay. For the following month, does anybody have a suggestion?
I was just, I like the idea that the Board has of strategic retreats, where, you know, immediate academic discussion or discussion about long-term goals of a school really require to say, let's give it 20 minutes, you're just scratching the surface, and you really need to flesh things out, look at data, hear everybody's side, give everybody a chance to speak. It's hard to do that in a short amount of time, and I think really important discussions merit extended discussions, so.
Could I comment on that?
Sure.
So I completely agree with you, and hence, you do normally have like those retreats, whether among us or in other contexts. There may be a value, though, in spending some amount of time on certain topics here, because they can prime those discussions and actually then determine, well, you know, this is, for this year, we really want to focus on such and such a topic in January, and then we can do the homework that we need to, beforehand, to actually discuss it. But I do agree, you can only get, you can only start scratching the surface in 20 minutes or 30 minutes. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I like that idea, especially if we, maybe we can backwards engineer it from saying, in January, our primary strategic discussion item will be X. And then we could think about doing a 10-20-minute presentation discussion, learning seminar to get us up to speed, so that we can hit the ground running in January, and really have everybody have had some chance to sleep and thought on the topic under discussion.
Or even a variation on that same theme is, do you have a couple of topics during, well, we're now coming up right close to January, but a couple of, starting like in February or March, a few topics we discuss, so we can try to get to a sense of what do we really want to focus on, and then work back, and then work backwards on that. Just a variation on that same theme. Speaking of that, do folks have some thoughts around what we may want to cover in January? It's coming pretty soon. And as folks will remember, we got, I think last one was remarkable, in terms of the session.
That was great.
Yeah, especially, actually, the one that, both of them, they were, they were really good.
Yeah, I can't even remember January one.
Yeah, I just remember it was good, and the next one was even better.
All about the future.
Yeah.
Let's say maybe looking at, or brainstorming more creative ways of measuring academic success, because we're very score-driven, and again, I just come back to that point of like, if you're not an MCAS or an AP teacher, you know, what, what contributions are you making to those measures? And there's definitely a trickle-down, and there's definitely- And there's definitely a trickle-down, and there's definitely skills that you have across the curriculum in all classes, but I think, again, there's, there's a lot that we're not measuring in the school, really, that joy of learning, that's such a value here. I mean, thinking of a way that we can really see if we're instilling that in students. I think that we kind of touched on it a little bit in Education Committee, but it's one of those discussions that is such a big discussion to have, that maybe if we came and like researched, and we're able to spend time in January talking about that, that could be really helpful.
I, I wholeheartedly second that.
Yeah.
We've, we've worked on this 10-year blueprint document, where we take our core values, and we try to figure out, how do you measure integrity? How do you measure excellence? How do you measure community? And much of it is, Brianna said, is very tricky. How do you measure joy of learning? How do you measure creativity? How do you measure innovation? And, you know, we're thinking hard about that for our chart of renewal. So having discussions around that, if we want, you know, our core values are important, how do we measure ourselves by our core values? How do we hold ourselves to our core values? And what specific measurements we come up with, as Brianna said, would be a great discussion.
Yeah. I agree. Yeah. Even, I think about that at a very broad level. So there's the question of measuring success as students are here, but even beyond, right? Did what we do actually prepare them well for college and for career? And, and, you know, start, start with the immediate, and then keep working forward.
Right.
That could be very powerful. Any other thoughts in that area?
Just, just a, a big second on the, how do we measure success beyond, beyond AMSA?
Can I just throw one thing out as we even think about that? So, so like, I'm at a business school, and its mission is to educate leaders who make a difference in the world. They don't say positive. And they have a history of creating some fantastic leaders who've done very positive differences, or change, actually, I should say change, in the world. And a few were, were very dramatic and not so positive. And so it brings up this question of ethics, and making a positive difference on the world. And so as we think about measurement, I mean, I just, I just throw this, because I'm hearing this, I don't know, there's this, this theme in a lot of places, like, how do we assure that our students and our, our next generation really has a very solid core when it comes to ethics? We've got great core values.
Integrity.
Yes. Like integrity, and beyond even. Right? I think integrity is like the foundational. But, you know, how, how do we do that? Cause we met, you know-
How do we create citizens-
Yeah.
For a democratic country.
Yeah.
And world.
And world. Yeah. Absolutely. So I just-
Yeah. I think that's, those are great, great questions. Timeless questions.
Yeah.
Sounds like a topic.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Great. Anything else in general that, that, for, for the January retreat? Anything?
We've not really created a vision. So then I did create a vision.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No. I was just thinking, cause I think that's something that we have always sort of struggled with. We did, I think this exercising the core values was critical, was a critical first step, because that helps. But, you know, this, this whole issue of the guiding principles document, or, or what the vision of what we want AMSA to be is still out there, right? It's still a little-
To make it a little more concrete?
Yeah.
Concrete?
Right. State what, what we're aiming for.
Almost like an architectural drawing, if we say, you know, here's what we want AMSA to look like physically.
Yeah.
You know, what we might look like-
Like as a school.
As, as an entity, you know?
And we definitely have that lighthouse somewhere on that.
A lighthouse.
Okay. Very good. Any other items? Any other items for next month's agenda that we wanna make sure we include?
Well, we've got the audit, so.
Yeah.
MCAS results have come out, right?
Yeah.
I mean, today, so.
Anything else?
It's gonna be a key item.
Very good. Okay. Well, thanks, everyone. With that, we're going to adjourn for executive session.
We need a, we need a roll call vote to enter executive session.
So do we have a, a motion to adjourn to executive session-
Motion to adjourn.
-to discuss litigation strategies and consider the purchase of lease of real property, because doing so in public may jeopardize our position?
Sorry. I didn't know you were going through the full thing. Yes. It's a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Uh, yes. So, motion approved. Thank you very much. We will not be returning to the session.
And you're gonna invite, um-
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Lisa.
I'm sorry. Yes. And we will be inviting Ellen, Lisa, and Leanna. Thank you.